But we are the Bennington Select Board. I'm Tom Jacobs and have the privilege of chairing the Select Board. We're gathered here on November 26th at the Firehouse. We start the meeting with introducing ourselves next to Nancy Lively, our esteemed reporter. Go ahead, Chad.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
Thank you all for coming, Jeanne Connor.
And Stuart Hurt, who is our town manager. We don't have Jim Carroll here. He's up north getting oriented in the State House. So I think that's a two-day session for all rookies or freshman representatives, right?
That's where it is.
Yes, okay. I got the message. And Donald Campbell is traveling back from the West, so he won't be here either, but we do have a quorum for conducting business. Jeanne, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all. When I finish with the consent agenda discussion, we'll actually then have citizens' public comments. We've decided that's probably appropriate to do, and I just want to announce it at the beginning of the meeting. And then we'll go into the proposals on the recreation center, because there might be some overlap with some of the citizens' comments, too, I see. So the consent agenda containing the minutes of November 12th, 2018, and the warrants have been circulated and opportunity for review has been available. Any motion would be accepted by yours truly.
And will we accept the minutes?
And the warrants?
And the warrants.
Okay. The consent agenda has circulated. A second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second discussion. Jeanne and I were just having a quick discussion about the warrants, and I've already asked Stu earlier relative to a payment to Goldstone Architecture for the REC Center design schematic. And I see that there was an entry there. And Stu, could you just explain to the rest of the board why we're paying that when we assume there was UCS involvement?
Following the presentation last week, obviously, the staff had the clear impression that the board wanted to carry the process forward and take a hard look at Phase Two.
Which is right.
We received a proposal from Goldstone and his subcontractors to carry forward with that design concept so we would know exactly how it fits with Phase One, which is what UCS is proposing and paying for. So there are two distinct opportunities there. He's doing work for the town because Phase Two will be principally town facility.
Okay. And the two are to make sure that they mesh?
Make sure that they go together.
Okay.
And is there some kind of report that we'll get for this outlay of money?
Yes, you'll get an improved conceptual plan and some more detail in how it goes together.
Because I know when we were talking, he was looking at the isolation zones and how that might intersect with the design?
Yeah, we're taking a look at the structure themselves, especially the two-story portions of it and things like that, so that we will have a better understanding of what we can do with the facility.
When they're done, can we invite them back to present so the public can see it as well?
I'm sure we can.
Thank you.
Great idea. Any other discussion?
I don't remember where it was because I didn't have my packet. I read it online. Just so there's no confusion with the public, there was a warrant for the splash pad, and I just want people to realize that's just a pass-through because it's not -- or taxpayers are not paying for the splash pad, but the money's just coming through the town. Correct?
That's certainly the case.
Right, right.
It's all grow Bennington funds that the private group has raised and made available, but obviously, the contractor has to be paid, and they don't have a checking account.
And the funds are coming through us. We're holding those funds for --
Because it's basically our park, our park.
Yes.
And we want to make sure that the work's done. That's -- thank you. Good point.
Are those funds not being held by the Bennington Downtown Alliance?
No, they're managing the funds for the Park at 336. We're managing for the funds for the park, Emergence Park, or whatever your -- the Splash Bad Park.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That's five in favor and adopting the consent agenda as proposed. We do have a sign-up sheet, and we're fortunate to have a number of folks that would like to speak with the board, starting with Mary Morrissey, our esteemed representative. The topic is solar. Mary, could you just join us?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mary. Thank you for coming.
I had a couple of questions this evening. I received a letter from Stuart last Wednesday in regards to the Stark and Warner site proposal. So I have a couple of questions that I think probably the board can answer as well as Stuart, I'm hoping. So did the Select Board review the November 19th letter to the PUC, formerly known as the Public Service Board, before it was sent out?
Stu, I'm going to have to read cues and pass it to you. And Jeanne, could you substitute for?
That's right. Yes, they did, yes.
They did, okay. And did the Select Board review the October 29th VHB? Those are the folks who did the analysis before the November 19th letter went out and was sent, okay. Did the VHB consider in their analysis views from the Mount Anthony Country Club and Southern Vermont College?
I don't know.
That was something that was certainly discussed at length at the Bennington College meeting, that there were concerns, as in other solar proposed projects.
Well, you recall, the VHB was hired by the Malones, was proposed by us, one of the firms that we recommend as an objective observer. I can't tell you whether they looked at those views or not.
But that was supposed to be considered within this analysis?
The proposal was to be -- to consider whether or not these sites would meet the definition of preferred sites in the town plan and our solar energy proposal.
Were the Public House, Harwood Hill Motel, Bennington Project, Independence, and other neighbors given the opportunity to review the VHB report and comment on it?
No.
And was there any public process around any of the aesthetics evaluation?
No.
And did VHB consider the full encompassing impact of the Chelsea Solar, the Apple Hill Solar, Battle Creek Solar, Warner, and Stark Solar?
They were hired to look at the Stark and Warner to see whether or not they could meet the definition of preferred sites. That was what the requirement of the settlement agreement was, that this board agreed to, and my understanding is that's what they did.
But that's your understanding? You're not sure that's what?
I was not involved in the study. None of my staff were.
And why would the town of Bennington file anything on the Warner and Stark projects when the petition applications have not even been delivered to the state yet?
Because the settlement agreement required us to file something if, in fact, the report found that these were preferred sites. We were required under the settlement agreement to notify the PUC of what our findings were.
Okay. And I was a member of the committee that identified preferred sites. Does B in your letter state that Stark and Warner each is located on a preferred area?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
In your letter, you had A, B, and C, and the question is, does B in your letter state that the Stark and Warner each is located on a preferred area?
I'm assuming that it does. The letter was drafted by council from my signature.
Okay. And did the preferred sites map specifically identify Stark and Warner sites as preferred sites?
No, it does not.
And so then, how can the town bypass the public planning process that went into the preferred sites map?
Because the definition in the plan document provides that preferred sites can be determined outside of the mapping process if, in fact, they can be entirely screened from off-premise by natural vegetation. That's the definition, and I could ask Dan to clarify that, but that's what my understanding.
But obviously, we don't know that for a fact. There are other sites that have been approved by the town in Bennington, that the sighting or in screening is not screening what they're supposed to, so how are we even aware that's going to happen?
Because that's the proposals that VHB reviewed, and they had to take a look at whether or not those proposals, with the vegetation, natural vegetation left in place, would meet the definition of a preferred site. And they did. They found that.
Well, my hopes are that will be the case, but I guess I would have to just indicate, not that it matters, probably, ten of you. I'm very disappointed that this is the second time that the folks from the Public House, the Harwood Hill Motel, and others in that area have been left out of a public process.
Well, they received the same thing that you did. We sent out the report and a copy of the letter so they would have that, so they'd understand how the decision process was.
Right, and that was after the fact, though, because they did not -- they were not invited to the Bennington College meeting that would have provided them an opportunity to voice their concerns.
Thank you for your comments.
I can have the mic back? Thank you, Jeanne. Next individual is Jackie Kelly. And I see you're on this list twice, Jackie. One for the REC Center and the other water rates. The Recreation Center is going to be an agenda item tonight. Is it something different from that? Because you'll have an opportunity to comment during that, after that proposal presentation.
I've read the proposal, but I can make my comments now or later.
I think you'd better wait till later because it's an agenda item, but the water rate certainly is something you can adjust. Good evening. Go ahead, Jackie. Introduce yourself for the --
Yes, well, my voice is a little bit whacked, so bear with me. In the past two years, my personal water rates have doubled. And yesterday, on the public forum, Bennington Public Forum, there was a letter by Rosemary Chikowsky, and I believe she submitted this letter to you, Stu, stating that people who have recently been affected by PFOA have now been affected by water rates, which they've never paid before because they weren't hooked up to a well. And some of these people now are experiencing great difficulties in financing and paying for their water rates. And I also wondered if, you know, by supply and demand rule, if more people are in the pool, how come the water rates continue to go up? And would these people then have some relief because of the PFOA-affected sites and that they were determined that they had to, in order to correct this problem, they had to hook up to the water? So I was wondering if the selectmen could look at the water rates and say, okay, now that we have more people onboard, can these water rates be reduced? Thank you.
Okay. Just before we leave, though, Stuart, I think we've had some discussion when what rates were established relative to those new parties coming onto the system from the wells.
Yes, we actually, the water rates this year went up only 2%, principally because we picked up 150 some odd new customers. So that did, in fact, reduce the impact of the rate increase on the current users, including those who are now newly connected.
They're still kind of high for people who have never paid them. And so maybe they need some type of gradual, you know, move on, because according to Rosemary, these people are going to lose their homes because they don't have enough money to pay taxes and water rates and this and that. And I have to also inject here the fact that, for senior citizens, since 2010, the senior rates for Social Security have only gone up 5% until this year. This year, now, it's almost a 3% increase. So in eight years, they will only experience a 1% increase. And so you increase water rates 2%, and they're down in the dumps. So I just thought I'd inject that.
No, it's all valid and of concern because the -- not just water rates, but we try to maintain the tax rate for the town also. It impacts folks that have residents, but the challenge that we have, and I don't think we've heard the last of it, it's not going to become less expensive to have municipal services. And it's not because it's Bennington, it's just because that's the natural cost of doing business, and it's --
And I agree, but I also, I disagree with Rosemary's conclusion. We have not seen a major problem for people paying these rates. Now, they've only received one quarterly bill, in some cases, maybe two. So we're not hearing those kinds of stories, that people are about to lose their homes or be thrown out on the street. That's just not happening. It doesn't mean that some people won't struggle financially, but our water rates are well within the average rates of water charge throughout the state of Vermont. We're not any higher or outlandish than any other water system. So I -- and we work with our people to make sure that they can get on a payment agreement if they can't afford to pay the entire bill at that time.
Go ahead, Jeanne.
Forgive me, I don't mean to be confrontational at all, but I've never had a well. Aren't there costs associated with being on well water, with water softeners and salt you may have to purchase? I guess I'm just wondering that some of the cost may just shift, so you're not paying for salt or the Culligan Man or whatever you need to do if you have a well, but instead, you have to pay to be hooked up. I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
For me, and I just put salt in, and I have a well, and I just put salt in it, and it only cost me less than $40 for the year.
Okay, there's my answer. I didn't know. Thanks.
Stu, I'm wondering, do you recall where our rates fall in terms of Vermont? I mean, my memory was that when we talked about our rates, we were medium to on the low end?
We're above the mean, and we're above the average at the present time. As you know, we've had to raise those rates in order to bring our water system into compliance over the last three years with a $3 million bond and several years before that, a $7 million bond for the water treatment facility. So, yes.
Yeah, well, Rosemary's other question, of course, was the number of people in a household. If there's just one person, they pay the same as multiple. There's no --
I think there's some history there that we probably don't, shouldn't get into tonight relative to meters and doing all that. I think that's been at least addressed. Maybe it's time to review it again, but it's obvious that, you know, the family of five versus the retired widow or widower, you know, it's not the same gamut. And maybe we should look at it again, just because of the increase in the rates, to see if there is a more fair way to treat our citizens. But as I said, I don't think there's going to be an easy out, because just the cost of maintaining the system, the paying the bonds off, those are expenses that we're not going to be able to get away with.
That's correct.
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike Leek, is he here? Mike, is this -- do we save your -- keep your ammo dry? In my color, Community Theater, you can step behind the camera, get it right. One of the special honored 40 under 40?
Thank you. I just want to make an announcement for people watching, since this will be our last meeting before the performances, but if anyone's interested, Bennington Community Theater returns to Old Castle December 7th and 8th, two evening shows at 7:30, a matinee at 2:00 for The Curious Savage. It's a very funny play set in 1950, so hope you come see 10 really talented people that are in your community right here, and tickets are very reasonable, $10 or $15. So hope to see you all there.
Mike, you're in that production, right?
I am, yes.
You talked about 10 talented people in the community. Mike certainly fits the bill. Thanks, Mike. Rose Delford. Rose?
I forget to talk about YMCA.
Okay, that's going to be on the agenda, and we're going to have that discussion in a very few minutes. And then after that, if you ask a question of the presenters or the board, we'll probably be able to at least give you some sense of where we're coming from.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay, great. I don't believe that I overlooked anyone else, but the sign-up sheet was available. Is there anyone that wants to address the board that are not matters related to the agenda? I don't want to cut you short, but we do have a substantial amount of business, so if I hear no one so interested, we'll move right into the presentation proposal for the Recreation Center, which I expect Zirwa Chawarti is going to be leading us. And Jessie Rumlow, I'll bet. Nice to meet you.
Yes, so I wanted to take this opportunity, both to introduce this proposal and to introduce Jess Rumlow, who is the Assistant Director of the Berkshire Family YMCA. And as per the proposed management agreement that we have shared with the Select Board, Jess is also being put forward as the proposed interim director for the Bennington Recreation Center. So what we're proposing to the Select Board this evening is a 12-month agreement with the Berkshire Family YMCA. And in the memo that I provided to you, I highlighted both the context for this agreement and what some of its objectives are. So as many of you will recall, the YMCA is not new to Bennington. We had a much-beloved Bennington YMCA from 1912 to 1970. That YMCA unfortunately left our community in that period, especially in the transition to the new Recreation Center facility. The Berkshire Family YMCA has been in partnership and conversation with the town since the end of 2016. They offered their first summer camp at the REC Center in 2017, and this was their second summer camp this year. So it's obviously been a learning process, but we're really happy they're here, working with us and bringing new programming and opportunities here. With this management agreement, what we're doing is, instead of hiring a new full-time Recreation Center Director, we're getting into a 12-month agreement with the Berkshire Family YMCA for them to provide Jess, in this scenario, to us as the interim director of the REC Center. And with that agreement, what the town will do is it will pay a fee of $3,600 per month to the Berkshire Family Y. The agreement, as I mentioned, is for 12 months, and in the first three months, 120 days, four months. Some days are arithmetic. In the first 120 days, the Berkshire Family Y will offer an operational assessment, and maybe Jess can tell us a little bit about what you're thinking that will look like. But that is mainly with, to develop a better understanding of what the existing footprint of the building can allow in terms of programming and events. As we discussed at the last Select Board meeting with the proposal from UCS and for the proposed expansion, you know, we'd love to see a lot of things happen at the REC Center, but we have to be realistic about how much we can do, especially with some accessibility limitations in the building. So Jess has a big task on her plate. I want to really emphasize that membership rates at the REC Center are not going to change during this 12-month period. We're not, you know, suddenly just whisking things off to the YMCA. This is really a period of study and assessment, and Jess will be exploring some possible new programs, seeing what works, what doesn't, and crucially, really getting a sense of what community needs and, you know, what the community wants to see there. And then finally, there will also be a transition committee that will work with the, as a kind of, as a liaison between the town and the Berkshire Family Y. It will meet quarterly, you know, get sort of updates from the Berkshire Y about what they're doing, and also, again, you know, provide feedback back to the YMCA about, you know, what the community is seeing, what areas might not be getting addressed, and so on and so forth. So that's just a quick overview.
The transition committee, has that been determined for composition yet?
We have discussed some potential members. We wanted to actually have a formal agreement first before we started to appoint that, but I have reached out to the Assistant Director of the REC Center to, for example, recommend, you know, two frequent members of the REC Center, regular users of the REC Center, so that we can have a combination of community members, you know, community partners, and of course, you know, maybe recreational professionals who can guide us through this process.
Great, so cross-section of the community.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Without further, go ahead.
So, within the first 120 days, it's not coming in and saying, this is a YMCA and here's what I'm doing. It's coming in and assessing, what are you guys doing? And then, how can I improve upon or support what is already going on and maybe offer some great ideas or new programming that can just add to what you have in this community? So, you know, we walk around the fitness center, and it's, how do we use this space better? We have a basement that right now isn't being used, and that space can be used for things. So let's talk about what can we add to it? Can we do some fitness classes in there? Can we offer some school-age programming down there? Both of our branches do a kids' night out program. I don't know how many parents are in the audience. Two hours on a Friday night where your kids get to be dropped off, and they get to go swimming and have a pizza party and enjoy their time at the facility, and the parents get two nights knowing that the kids are taking, or two hours in the night to know their kids are taken care of, they're having a good time, and they're enjoying the REC Center. We want to get the youth in that building, start using that facility, even in the winter months when it's cold and there's not as much to do. How can we utilize the space that's there? I walked into one of the small rooms, and I was like, this room's large enough, we could do some yoga classes in here. We can add some group fitness classes. At the YMCA's, we have tons of programs for our active older adults, where we're doing chair yoga is one, that we have 30 active older adults coming in for a chair yoga class. All right? So what ideas, what program can we bring that might not be happening here, or how do we collaborate with the community? Some of the partners that you have in, we collaborate with so many different organizations. It's just not the YMCA going out there and doing it on their own. It's the YMCA working within the community to make sure that we are providing and supporting the needs of the community, and that means utilizing the resources that are already there. I would love to see youth sports coming back. I heard about, three years ago or so, the youth sports kind of left the REC Center. We have the most amazing outdoor facility for youth sports. And so, but I also know that the community stepped up and kind of took a lead role in that. So where does the Y fit into that? What can we add to offer that? I also know school-age programming is a dire need in this community, from what I've been told. After-school programming for kids, what are they doing when school gets out? The Pittsfield branch of our YMCA has seven after-school programs that operate within the school system. We're right there at the schools, in their home community, so the kids aren't traveling to get to their after-school programs. Parents know that they're safe, and they're right there at school. And we have our staff go to them. It's been an amazing way to start programming, to get school age going, and to reach the community where they are. We like to call it Y without walls. And so we don't have to be just in our footprint in that building. We can expand outside, and that can be with fitness classes and programming and all of that. We can go out into the community, too, whether, you know, if the building has its restrictions for us. One of the school-age programs, I ran the school-age program in Pittsfield for three years before I moved up to manage the Northern Berkshire branch, and we started one school-age program. It had about 350 kids in the school. The first year, we averaged 15 kids in the program, and this year, it's at capacity with 26, Monday through Friday, before and after school. A school-age program can bring in over $100,000 a year in revenue, especially when we're doing it that way. So these are ways that we can start building the revenue growth at the REC Center so that the YMCA can have the opportunity to come in, not increase rates astronomically, and relieve the town of some of their commitment to the budget also. And so that's what this year is about, is about how do we make the REC Center sustainable on its own? What program can we bring in that's going to benefit the entire community? And that's what this year is about, is let's come together, let's pull our resources together, support one another, and come up with a plan that works. And we have a year to do that, and I think we have the right team to do that.
Yeah. Basically, have 120 days to say, you know, here's, here's where we're at, and it'll be a report back to the Select Board, I expect, based upon the community input and the committee's work. So that's really a good overview. I think we're welcoming that. I don't mean to end your discussion.
Nope. I'm sure there's questions.
There might be a few questions from this side and as well as from the audience. The survey that is still ongoing, I think it's just closing right this week, right?
Excellent reminder, Tom.
That's what I figured I'd give you a little.
You can take it on the town's website.
Anyone that has not taken the town survey, please do. A good part of that had indicated, both in format and also in response, that there is a significant need for increased enhancement of our recreation opportunities for all ages, both for youth and seniors. And I'm expecting that if the Y and the town come together on this, that that's going to be something that'll make it work and be responsive to the citizens. But other questions that you might have?
One thing I thought of or wanted to ask you is, have you done this sort of model that you're proposing in other communities?
We actually, before we entered the management agreement with, or we entered a management agreement with the Northern Berkshire branch about three years ago now. So we did one year where Randy Kennis was the interim CEO during that transition time. And then after that year, we did enter into a permanent partnership with the Northern Berkshire branch. And so that's how we went from two separate YMCA's into the Berkshire Family YMCA with the Pittsfield branch and the Northern Berkshire branch.
So you have experience?
Yes, I was part of that transition also. Yes. And we've also done it, we just actually merged officially with the CYC basketball program in Pittsfield also. And so that also went through a management agreement before we went through the permanent, or the merger.
And the only thing I thought of, and it may not be true, but we were also excited about the possibility of Phase Two of the renovation of the Rec Center. Maybe having increased programming at the Rec Center would help with grant applications and successful awards. I don't, I might be pie in the sky, but it probably wouldn't hurt.
I don't think, you know, increasing program use and things like that is ever a bad thing. And I think that it can show the need for the expansion, if nothing else, right? As we start developing productive programs, we see the need to be able to offer more.
Well, we're very lucky to have the Rec Center, and I guess, you know, we want to use it to the best, to the best it can, have it be the best it can be and serve the community as well as it can. So, that's all.
Carson?
Thanks for being here tonight. Just one, actually two questions. Would your role put you over here multiple days a week? Would you also have a shared role in one of those spaces, the Northern Berkshire branch?
So in the agreement, it says 15 days a month. I will be here when you consider weekends. That I hope that maybe I get a couple of those off. I would be here, you know, about four days a week. I'll split my time between Northern Berkshire branch and here.
And your title is the same there as it would be here?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was curious on.
How do you see the Y fitting in with our existing employee structure? Because they're town employees, all of the individuals there. You know, it's someone coming from the outside, not telling you how to do things, but how do you envision implementing a relationship with the staff?
We went through this transition with the Northern Berkshire branch also, and what I found was, the best way to do it is, it's not coming in and making changes tomorrow. It's coming in and assessing and looking at things, coming up with ideas and talking to them about it. Getting their feedback, hearing their perspective, and then talking about maybe why we need to move this way. Getting them on board. I know at the Northern Berkshire branch, some of the ideas that I brought forth weren't necess, you know, putting lane lines in the pool and having lap swim consistently available was a challenge for the Northern Berkshire branch. And it was, "Let's try it out. Let's give it a 90-day opportunity. We're going to assess it. We're going to track the usage of this change and see how it works, and then we'll go back and reassess it. If it doesn't work, that's okay. But let's try some things and see how it works before we say it's not going to." And I think it's just taking the time and being clear and explaining how things are going to change or evolve, and then also letting them weigh in and hearing that. But it just takes time, and, you know, I've, I've been in that position before, and I think the staff feel valued when they're able to voice their opinion. And that's where I would bring them to the table, and let's, let's talk about this together.
I know that we all recognize that we're going to have enhanced resources with this, and so if the staff has ideas of how, maybe they've been somewhat stymied over the years because of lack of resources or direction, that they can actually use this new relationship or opportunity to enhance that.
Well, and I think we can learn from our experiences too. You know, the YMCA is a Rec Center in itself also, and so, you know, we've been through a lot too with transitions and mergers and, you know, learning from the process that we've already gone through, I think is going to be very beneficial for us too.
And my last question, I wouldn't take someone's thunder. It says that at the end of the 12-month period, there'll be a discussion as to, quote, "Take over the Rec Center as its own facility at the conclusion of the contract period." I guess I need to have some idea of how that's envisioned, because this is bricks and mortar that belong to the community, so it's not something that we're just going to be able to just sign over to the Y or any other entity. How do you feel, or how do you see that working?
So Tom, the reason it's worded that way is because that's exactly what we're hoping these next few months will offer us, is an understanding of what a potential partnership or merger would actually look like. Right now, we're completely in speculation if we try to offer an answer. So whether it would be that, you know, what are useful models to pull from the Northern branch merger there, whether it's a question of like, "Nope, this remains a town facility. We extend the contract for another 12 months." I mean, I think those options are all there. In fact, the last words, I think, of the management agreement say that it can either be extended for another 12 months or another period, determined period of time, or that there will be some, you know, some kind of merger agreement. I'm just a little reluctant to, you know, put the cart before the horse, because this is exactly what we're trying to explore right now.
Janie?
Yes, welcome. I'm so happy you're here. So I have a couple of questions. First, I'm really excited about the opportunities that you bring for before and after-school care. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about the kinds of interactions you've had with school systems and other places, and what that might look like?
So we have a great relationship with both school systems, Pittsfield and North Adams Public Schools. The Pittsfield Public Schools have welcomed us into their school. We use their cafeteria as our home base, have access to the gym. We operate throughout the entire school year. Snow days, we bring to our home branches for the YMCA's, and then any school closings and things, we're still able to provide care. They have been extremely supportive when they come to us for support too. I don't know if anyone has seen, but Pittsfield Public Schools is opening up a childcare center at Taconic High School, and they have asked the YMCA to run the childcare program at that school. So I think that goes to say how strong our relationship is with the Pittsfield Public Schools. Our Northern Berkshire branch is actually extremely unique. We are connected through our gym to Brayton Elementary School. So during the school day, the school has ownership of the gym, and then we have ownership of the gym in the mornings and in the afternoons. And it's a completely shared space that we use. And so with that, we work extremely close together. This summer, they have a 21st Century Grant that they run through their summer program, and they also have after-school program with the 21st Century Grant. And we offer the extended daycare for their students. So anyone who went to their summer camp program then came to the YMCA and continued. So we were able to provide the care for the parents who needed it, because they ended their program at 3 o'clock. So those partnerships happen. We also manage Windsor Lake and the lifeguards out at their camp, or out at Windsor Lake. So it's another service that, because of our partnership and our close work with them, has opened up opportunities for both the city and us to provide employment and lifeguards and all of those things. So, like I said, partnerships and collaborations are huge for the YMCA, and both Pittsfield and North Adams are a huge supporter and one of our best collaborations that we have in partnerships.
Wonderful, that's great. So can you also talk about, I'm excited about the opportunities to extend what we have available for seniors in this community as well? Have you, can you talk a little bit about the kinds of services you might be able to bring in there?
So we have Chris Buttrek, who is a wellness coach. She does Matter of Balance, which was a huge initiative in Pittsfield, so she is trained in that. We also have Enhanced Fitness, which is a program through YUSA that focuses on arthritis for active older adults. So it's a low-impact class that we offer specifically through the YMCA. One of the things that I had mentioned during one of the tours was, we also offer Silver Sneakers classes, which come through insurance company. And so if Silver Sneakers is part of your insurance company, they actually pay your fee for the YMCA. And so that they're able to use the facility, and then we get reimbursed through your insurance company instead. So that is a really great benefit for our seniors who come in. We've also been able to do Elder Services grants, utilizing Silver Sneakers as one of the workouts, and also the Enhanced Fitness program through the YUSA. Have both been able to be written into some of the grants through Elder Services, which has been great for us. The Y has also transitioned to a lot of evidence-based programming. So there's diabetes prevention programs, and then also we have Live Strong at the YMCA, which is a cancer survivorship program that we just launched this September. Three of us went to Chicago for a training, and it's for people who have survived cancer and now are working on building their strength back. And while they go through that 12-week program, they are getting a free membership at our YMCA. And the entire program is based in our fitness center and in our pool, and they're offered opportunities to kind of create their own network and team, free at charge, free of charge to the participants. So that's all grant-funded. So those are some really great initiatives that we have for our programs. And then we also, like I said, gentle yoga, our water aerobics classes are huge. In North Adams, we have twinges and the hinges, which is an evidence-based program. Or it's an arthritis fitness class that they do in the water. Three, we offer it three days a week, two times each day, and it gets about 15 to 20 people in that class. So it's a great one that we could also add.
Great, okay. My last question. So I think following up on what Jean was talking about before, we know that you can bring resources in terms of strategic planning. I'm just wondering, are there resources that you can bring to our community as we think about how we plan for and build a Y, you know, a Rec Center or Y that's going to allow us to do all the wonderful things that we would hope to be able to do?
So, we do have the support through YUSA. We've worked with Karen Leslie even on this discussion. So there is support to help us. They've come in and helped us strategize and build our strategic plan. We had one prior to the permanent partnership with Northern Berkshire, and then we've walked through one after that. And so they, they have the kind of the template and the form to bring us all together in order to work through a strategic plan.
Great.
And actually, Jean, if I can add to that, the proposals that we just discussed a little bit earlier that Goldstone Architects put together for Phase One and Two, that Phase Two conversation came out of a discussion with Randy and Jess.
Okay, great.
Because Pittsfield has just done a big expansion. So it was like, this is what, you know, an open fitness room looks like, this is why, you know, tracks are really, sort of overlooking tracks are really successful right now. So they were, we are already making them do a lot more.
Oh, thank you!
So yeah, we are in the middle of a capital campaign for our Pittsfield branch. And so we were joking, we're like, you know, Pittsfield's going to be the guinea pig, and then we'll kind of know how it all works, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being here. I'll be quick. I'm excited to see what opportunities you can bring to our local schools. I teach here at Montney-Antonia Bennington, and about nine years ago, I actually started teaching at Reed Middle School in Pittsfield.
Oh, okay.
So I know firsthand how your programs affect students and how much the students are impacted by those programming. So it's great that this is going to hopefully come here. You mentioned the capital campaign, and I did notice in the agreement, I might be getting a little too specific, so I apologize, but it did say in the fourth bullet there that under the board's or the Benningtons' role, that the board would allow the Berkshire YMCA to do a fundraising campaign. How exactly would that work? Would the funds raised here in Bennington stay in Bennington? And who would have oversight on how those funds would be spent?
So with that, I think it was mainly, you know, looking at, we do an annual campaign every year to go to subsidizing programs and memberships, so that we can continue to make sure that all of our memberships and our programs are affordable to all. That's a big piece about what the Y does. So last year, we handed out $300,000 in financial scholarship across the branches, and we raised $150,000 through our annual campaign. So we're obviously giving out more than we bring in. And those get spread out throughout both of, all of the organizations, but they would go directly to, you know, support the Bennington families and the programs that we have to offer, the funds that we're raising.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is helpful. You know, it's interesting too. I see it's like the Y proposal for the Recreation Center. This is really our community center. It's almost important that we start to address it in the context of a community center rather than the Y or the Rec Center. And somehow, next generation, maybe that'll be the case. Are there any other questions before I ask the audience if they have questions of Jessie or Zirwan? If not, if you would feel free to speak to the question, identify yourself. I know Jackie, you're on the list there, and Mike, please just come up and sit next to our presenters.
You can be on the mic.
Yeah, just so we can get you on camera and see, Cat TV can take that in.
Jackie, go ahead and then identify yourself again. I know you did earlier. But so. I want to applaud you both for the presentation. I thought it was very good. I really liked the snow day thing for kids and for families. It's very important, because some of them are left at home, you know? And so it's important that we have spaces and places for the kids to go. I also like the fact that you didn't confine yourself to one building, and that's important too, because we have some other sites that we could use and that are unused. The next thing I'd like to say is, we have a lot of people out there who are struggling with opioid crises and drug abuse, alcohol abuse, whatever. It's been my experience, I lived overseas for almost 32 years in military communities, and they had their gyms open 24/7. And so if we can even get up to seven, that would be really good to have it every single day, so that people can go and work out their problems. I think that's very important. The other thing, and it goes with the water deal, seniors can't go up to $396, which is what seniors pay in, in North Adams, I believe. I looked it up. Right now, our seniors pay $62 a year. So when you look after 12, 12 months of increasing the rates for programs, I think you really seriously have to consider the seniors and people who can't pay. And seniors aren't going to come to you with a financial background and give you what they have and what they don't have. They're not going to do that for you. They're not used to it, and they, they won't. So, and I, I like your after-school programs too. Thank you.
Good question. Maybe Jessie could just respond to that last one relative to the senior opportunities and whether any seniors are left out as a result of fee structures?
This year is for us to kind of evaluate and really come up with an idea of what we can do. we can do and what the community needs and what the rates would be. We know that this center, because we don't have a gym, you know, it doesn't have everything that the other two branches have, that the rates aren't going to necessarily match exactly for what you would see at our Northern Berkshire branch or at our Pittsfield branch. We are aware of that. So there's some confines to what we would charge. But at this point in time, your rates are staying the same. We're using this year to evaluate. The one thing I will say is I think camp's a really great opportunity to look at what we've done in the community. So our Pittsfield branch operates camp and we charge about $180 a week per family in Pittsfield. Our Northern Berkshire branch charges 100 and Bennington charged 70 last year. The reason why we were able to do this was because in the North Adams branch, we had a subsidy with a grant that we received for the community that supports that branch specifically. And so we were able to subsidize that program for that camp specifically in the community. So we reduced the rate from 180 to $100 for that family and on top of that provided financial aid to any families that applied and qualified. So they could go to camp for about $50 a week. In Bennington, it was very similar. So camp, if we said was at $100, the town of Bennington agreed to subsidize camp for $29, I believe, per week for the kids. And so we were able to provide camp at $70 for those kids. And we did offer financial scholarship on top of that subsidy and so kids could go to camp for $50 a week. We only had nine families use the financial scholarship because the $70 was a rate that worked for this community. And so we look at those things as we're developing our rates and what the community can handle and what the families can pay. And so I think that that's a really good example of how we really try to offer programming and membership for all, because we want everybody to walk through our doors, not just the ones who can afford it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Mike?
Hi.
Hello. My name is Mike Leek, lifelong resident of Bennington. And I've been kind of around the rec center most of my life. I could tell you how important it was for me to learn how to swim there and for my family. We competed with the swim team. I worked there as a lifeguard for a while and now I've come back.
Some of your family still has records there, I think, right?
Yeah, I think, yep. And even now, because of what the rec center provides as far as opportunities to swim at different times of the day and even especially during winter times on Sundays during the weekend, it's been important for me, swimming now as a master swimmer. But I've also been able to utilize the North Adams branch and also the Pittsfield branch. When we've had storms or issues where our rec center was closed, it was nice to be able to flex down there, especially when I prepared for some longer distance swim. I've done a couple of.
Pittsfield branch is nice.
Yeah. Pittsfield branch is nice. Done a couple of 10-mile swims. So it requires a lot of training. So, you know, the rec center's ability to really affect a lot of community members and a lot of families in the community, I think, is known by all of us. So I'm really excited to hear about some of the changes that are coming. You know, you could talk to Chris, but if you want to maybe throw my, my name on the list too for being a part of that transition committee, at least for offering suggestions, I'd be happy to do that. Because it's neat to see as an adult swimmer now, the number of adult athletes coming is increasing. The kids, Bennington Marauders, they've had tremendous growth specifically this season with their numbers and the high school team, which I think is one of very few in the state, you know, is really having great numbers as well. So we want to, for me on the swimming side of things, I want to keep, I want to stay wet and keep everybody else wet too, so.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Other questions? I think, Rose, did you have? Rose, you were on the list. Would you like to?
I just had a question.
Okay. Just speak right into that mic so the visiting TV folks can listen.
Now, you said like 15 for a class for seniors or something like that? That's, excuse me for being so blunt. It's not very impressive. On a bad day, when we go to senior exercise, this is at least 25. On a good day, probably 50.
And what space are you, in the pool?
In the pool.
That's great.
Yep. So it sounds like you're going to have double classes of what they're having at the senior center? Is that going to be fixed or? Because they have a lot of these classes that you're mentioning at the senior center.
Well, and that's what I said. It's, you know, we're going to take the time to kind of evaluate what is being offered and then just seeing what we can add to it. And, you know, using our resources that we have, you know, North Adams isn't that far, so there might be an instructor that's teaching something different that we could try up here or vice versa. But it's, it's really figuring out what you guys have, what you want and what you need. And that's what the first 120 days is about. So, you know, what I am presenting is opportunities and things that we have going on, but as, you know, we take the time, the, the big reason for doing this management agreement is so that we have one person here who's looking at the big picture, looking at, you know, all of the different things in the community and saying, all right, so these are the things that we can do. This makes sense. Because we don't want to duplicate, duplicate resources. We don't want, you know, if you have a really strong soccer program, I'm not going to sit there and say, let's bring soccer in, right? Or, you know, I'm not going to change anything with a class that's getting 50 participants. I would never do that. That's a successful class. I'm not here to change things that are working. I'm here to enhance things. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think it seems to be more towards doing things for kids. Seniors do a lot more exercising and a lot more things than maybe people think they do. It's not like it used to be, you know?
Oh, I, I, the active older adults in our branches are the most active demographic that we have. You know, we have a, a strength training class at our Northern Berkshire branch that just took off. It's called Strength Train Together. It's using free, free weights and like these participants are bench pressing weights, okay? We have an 83-year-old woman doing that class. We have a 30-year-old woman in that class. It is the most eclectic group of people. But in, they all looked at it and said, we can't do this class. And we're like, just come in, because we're going to modify it. We're going to work with you. And that's what our classes are about at the Y, is how to bring everybody together and the class is as challenging or as easy as you need it to be and we fit, we meet you at your fitness level. And so you might feel that you have the classes that you need and that there's not, you know, like your schedule is fulfilled, or we might be able to entice you with something new that you might really love. You never know. So I'm not, I would never dream of changing what you have. I might just challenge you to try something new.
We don't, actually, we don't, Rose any stronger than she is now.
I just have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
I live at Homestead Green, so if you, when you join there, it's through SASH, I get to go over there for nothing.
Okay.
Which is great. Would that change?
I think that part of what we look at is corporate memberships and collaborations and it would be something I would want to learn more about and how that partnership works, but I wouldn't have any intention of changing something that, you know, is valuable and it just might, you know, it would just be kind of, I need to review whatever, you know, all of the things that are coming. So I'm not taking anything away. I just want to, you know, learn how things are set up at this point in time and then we can go from there.
Yeah, because seniors do, you know, need to do more, but they also need to do some, be able to do something that they can afford. Living on social security doesn't give you a lot of money to throw around, so something like that.
And we have a lot of members on social security that come through the Y. And I know there's been concerns about, oh, we don't want to share that information. And our, our process is pretty seamless and pretty easy and we really work hard to make it a nice seamless process. We actually, at our branch, when you apply for financial aid, you automatically start on a two-week membership while we're processing your application. So the second you walk in that door, you have access to our facility as we work through that. So, you know, I don't want to discourage anyone from trying the financial aid and, you know, it is our way to make sure that we are providing a membership that's affordable for all and there is a process, just like any scholarship that you may receive. And we would work on that, but that's not this year. This year is, this year, and I am here to learn what you guys have going on. I just, I don't want, when I say, you know, scholarship process or, you know, financial aid to be intimidating by any means. It's, you know, we definitely make it as seamless as possible and we want everybody to come through that door and feel welcomed.
Well, thank you very much, Rose.
Thank you.
Nicole, did you have something, question, comment? Thank you. Nicole Giswami?
Hey. So I'm Nicole Giswami. I'm the head coach of the Bennington Marauder Swim Team. I share a similar story to Mike. I grew up swimming at the rec center on the team. I was also a lifeguard, came back from college and have been coaching for, I think this is my 16th year. So we've grown from when I first started to, from 30 to, I think we have 86 kids on the team right now. We are an independent team, so we do pay rec center fees and we, you know, we're employed by the Bennington Marauder Swim Team. So I guess I, like Mike, we were marauders together and collaborate a lot on our programs with marauders and masters. I guess we would also be interested in, you know, being part of a committee just to ensure the longevity and security of our team. We celebrated our 30th year in 2016 as the Bennington Marauder Swim Club. And while we do have swimmers that all pay the club or pay the rec center membership, you know, in addition, I would, I think it's safe to say that we do provide most of the equipment on the pool deck that we do allow the public to use. We fundraised for our own timing system, which was approximately $10,000. So I guess from our point of view, we're excited for some changes, maybe some attention and ways to really grow the program here in the community. And, you know, the kids do range in age from two all the way to 19.
Two on the swim team?
We have a Learn to Swim program. So there are guppies.
Okay.
So we have four different levels and a guppies program, which consists of the 85 or 86 kids that we have right now. And, you know, we do have a full board, so we are a board-run swim team. So I guess our interest tonight in hearing what you have to say is great, but we'd love to be part of those decisions, especially as I hear, hear you say things like the downstairs isn't being used, because we do use that for our dryland program.
Oh, that's good to know.
So yeah, we'd love to be able to enhance that, you know, have more equipment down there and really build that program.
And that's what I'd like to see too, is how we can shuffle some.
Yeah, sure.
And I will let you both know that aquatics is my background. I started out as a lifeguard too at a YMCA when I was 16. So the pool is kind of where I feel comfortable. I'm also LGI certified, so if you two want to get lifeguard certified again. But I'd love to, you know, hear more about that partnership and I know that it's important and pool space is kind of a commodity that, an important one and it's a valuable asset to the rec center. And so I think learning more about how the pool is being used is definitely important to me.
Sure.
To see how we can utilize that space and make sure everybody has their time and there's space in there.
Right. And I think too, the, you know, with the Grow Bennington Initiative and bringing more youth and keeping them off the streets and all of the problems that we face in this community, I think having programs for youth that, you know, the Y is willing to collaborate or work with us on to bring more of those kids in. You know, we do offer different types of payments. So our goal at the end of the day is to have every child who comes into that pool able to swim with us on the team. And so, you know, echoing what other people have said in the room, fees would be a concern, especially a year from now or whatever that model looks like. So really having that conversation and doing that together would be wonderful.
And, you know, just in general, our youth memberships so are extremely affordable for the most part. And then in our school age program, if you participate in an after-school program in our Y, your kid automatically gets a complimentary membership. So there are things like that to help encourage the youth members using our programs and things that, you know, could look at down the road as we get there. Like we said, we're not changing any fees any, during this timeframe. But there's a lot of ways to kind of creatively look at things to make sure that they're affordable and to make sure that these kids are able to get into our program. And so, and also around aquatics, YUSA has a big initiative going on right now about safety around waters and the importance of making sure that everybody has the ability to swim by third grade, because the risk of drowning increases at that point in time for them. And also working with the special needs demographic as well. And so we actually, for the 21st Century Grant Program at North Adams, we provided swim lessons to all of the third graders who participated in that program last year throughout the school year. So their after-school program came to the Y for lessons. And then over the summer, we added the Safety Around Water Swim Lesson component to the after-camp program with the 21st Century. So aquatics is a big piece about, of what we do within the YMCA.
Great. I just have one last question. So as an independent team, if the Y were to take over or merge or whatever that might look like, does the Y allow independent programs or would they all become Y programs?
So if you're paying a rental fee, it's a rental fee and you're paying to utilize the pool. For YMCA's in general, we are authorized to have one swim team throughout the entire organization. When we merged with North Adams, the North Adams Beta Swim Team had already dissolved. And so that made it an easy transition for us. So we are the Berkshire Family YMCA polar bears and we practice at the Pittsfield branch. At this point in time, what I could do for North Adams or if Bennington became a YMCA would be offer practice time and then they would swim competitively with our team from Pittsfield, but it would just be practice time. We wouldn't be creating a Bennington Rec Center YMCA, however we would word it, team. So it's not anything, you know, you would be renting the pool spaces basically.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Nicole. Is there anyone else that has a matter that we've got? Jesse's done an excellent job of presenting tonight and we just want to make sure. Tom, do you have a, please, yeah. Please, yeah. And I've got this gentleman in the back right after you. You're fine.
Hi.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Tom D, CEO of Southwestern Run Healthcare. I just want to really applaud the select board and the work of the town in putting this initiative together. I think it is very exciting. I think it's something I was, I've been asking about since I came here. I didn't know the history that we had a Y here once before. But as our healthcare system migrates more and more towards a population health initiative, I see many, many opportunities to collaborate with the rec center and the Y and the organization that's burgeoning. I mean, we have Rise Vermont. I think Andrew was here earlier and we are migrating towards much more of a health promotion model of care. Rise Vermont's one example, but I think we have, would have great opportunities to partner together and look to do things. I know as we recruit our staff and physicians and nurses, having services for the youth as well as the elderly is a big question that's asked all the time. So this is a, I view this as a win-win and we are here to help in any way we can. And we will certainly look to bring our team and our resources to bear to help make this work.
Great.
So thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate it. And Kristi, we'll see you in two weeks or something? Or Rise Vermont or something?
Andrea.
Andrea, I'm sorry. Yes, please, yeah. Thank you, Tom.
I'm Andrea Malinowski. I'm the program manager for Bennington County in Rise Vermont. I'm actually on my way out to go teach a class in the pool at the rec center. That's why I was speaking out.
So one foot's in the pool, right?
Right. But just to mirror what Tom said, you know, we're really excited to look at the community through the lens of preventative care and wellness. And it's very exciting to see the offerings of the rec center expand, include more people, to really take that shift and make people well instead of needing sick care at the hospital. And recreation is just a great way to do that, so I'm very excited about this project.
Great. Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Yes, David? Then we have that gentleman. I'm sorry, I keep putting you.
Good. I'm David Reese, Senior Vice President from Bennington College. And I just think this is, I wanted to say two things. I think it's really exciting. I think it's another sign of Bennington, the town of Bennington, on the move of bringing, taking a year to really reflect on. taking a year to really reflect on what should the rec center be, how can we make it better? And I really heard a lot about this is enhancement rather than changing. So, I think that's really exciting and I think you know our, our students have used the rec center off and on over the, over the years and I think there's, to kind of echo what Tom said, I think there'd be some real opportunities to think about how Bennington College, SVC, Community College, how we can as, as institutions also support the rec center and participate in, in other opportunities particularly for Bennington College students who really want to participate in the, in the life of the town and often find, it's challenging to find structures to do that. So, I think this would be another opportunity. So, very exciting and looking forward to the year ahead.
Thank you David. Sir.
Hi.
I didn't mean to overlook you at all because go right ahead, introduce yourself if you could.
My name is Derek Hurley, resident of Bennington. My questions, well, I have a two-part question for the board. First part is if this is a match made in heaven, everything goes good, everything goes well, who actually gets the final decision on saying, yes, we go forward, the Y's taking over? Is that a town vote or is that amongst you on the board?
It's going to, I stand corrected if need be, but it's really going to be the Select Board's decision to enter into this process. If it goes after the year, there's a determination and there'll be a public hearing or two, I expect to, to affect that. So, the answer is it would not be a town vote, it would be a board decision.
Board decision, okay. Second part of that question, if, no offense, it all goes to pot, if there's not anybody who can agree on anything, heads banging against each other, trying to figure out what's to work and what's not going to work, whose decision then is it to call it off? Saying we are going separate ways?
Yep. You can answer from the Select.
There is, forget where.
It's an option out.
There is a 30-day notice that parties can offer to each other.
And either, either side can choose.
But that still didn't answer the question.
If you're talking about if after.
Is it?
Who decides?
Who decides?
It's again going back to zero, let me finish.
Do you have a meeting of everybody?
No, no.
To get together or is it just say, I don't agree with it and it's over?
Basically, if the, there's a decision that is management recommended and the Y I'm sure would be involved in that, it would come to the Select Board and the Select Board would make a decision whether or not to continue, renew or terminate the arrangement based upon that.
Now, my last remark would be, presentation was about three years ago or two years ago from your colleague, I think.
Randy.
Randy. He came in and stated that they were going to do programs and stuff and apparently somewhere, I think your town motto is teamwork through communication. Communication didn't quite make it down the line of command, it sort of stopped because programs that were supposed to be offered never got offered. And what was offered was just a plain summer program. So, all the rest of the programs that the rec center usually has offered never happened and there was a lot of questions. Why wasn't there T-ball? Why wasn't there summer, summer soccer camp? Why wasn't there any basketball camp or anything? And the communication at the time was the Y is supposed to take care of it and then the rec is supposed to take care of it. But nobody ever said who was supposed to take care of it. With that being said, is that going to happen this year?
Zero, or?
Again, Jess and I are in some ways not the right person, people to answer this because we weren't here in 2016 when the first management agreement was this, or not management, but the first agreement was signed. And I think to your point, I'm glad you brought this up because we've heard this a little, quite a bit actually about the Y was supposed to do this, do that, and they only did the summer camp. And actually, because I'm a nerd, I went back and looked at the initial agreement and the initial agreement was specifically about the summer camp and exploration of after-school programs. Now, we've had lengthy discussions about making sure that after-school programs, senior programming, don't fall through the cracks again, but I would like us to be very clear that this accusation that the Y was supposed to do certain things that they didn't is not one that is reflected by the initial agreement.
Thank you.
And Tom, if I could follow up on that, I think you're absolutely correct. There was I think some early on misunderstanding about what the rec center was going to continue to do and what we were asking the YMCA to do when they came to town. And that first year was a struggle, not, I think for the Y as well to get underway. I think the second year, the summer camp went very well, but we did drop the ball literally on the T-ball programs and others that should have continued but didn't. And that, and I think one of the things that we've addressed with the Y going forward is we want to bring those programs back and I think you heard Jess say that earlier, that we're going to bring those programs back so that they'll, they'll be here again. They should not have been lost. Unfortunately, these things do happen, things slip through the cracks.
I understand. There is, that's why I asked about the communication.
Yes.
Are you?
Yeah, thank you. Those are really excellent comments, well received. Good evening.
Hi, so I'm Sarah Callanian. I have a swim around the Marauders and I am the President of the Board of Directors for the Marauders. So, I just wanted to ask you to clarify your answer because I'm not so sure I understood about whether or not the Marauders could remain an independent team in a, I know this is a year of exploration, but in a, in a Y organization.
So, basically you would be considered like, you would be renting the pool space is how it would be looked at. You wouldn't be a YMCA team, you are just an organization coming in to utilize the facility.
Okay, and do you have teams that do that in, in any YMCA's?
So, we actually, Taconic High School and Wilcona High School both use our Pittsfield Branch for swim practices and we host the high school meetings. They are not YMCA teams, but they utilize our facilities through a rental agreement.
Okay, okay. Thanks. You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. Keep swimming. Any other comments? This has been very productive, I feel and.
We've got to build that Y.
We've got to.
We've got to say two.
Yes, we'd like, and that's why it's so exciting. There's so many opportunities both from structure to buildings and the bricks and mortar. We've got to keep this momentum going and Jesse, we really appreciate it. I'm going to ask you to, unless you have a closing comment. Great, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
You will need a, an authorization motion from the board to approve the understanding, the agreement of understanding.
That's correct.
Yep.
Motion to authorize the manager to sign.
Okay, is, can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Further discussion on the.
For a discussion, what?
Open the discussion on the draft if you have any. It's basically, it's been pretty well explained, that top executive memorandum was excellent.
I moved if you, second.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That's five in favor and the manager will execute the agreement on our behalf. Thank you very much everyone for taking the time this evening. The next item on the agenda is I think Stu's going to lead us in this discussion regarding a lawsuit potential involving the town of Bennington.
Yes, actually you've got, you've jumped over the Downtown Bennington Alliance, huh?
Yeah, that's going to be put off until the full board complement is here.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, just, it was just.
I didn't realize that question.
Oh, we're not, we're not doing it?
Yeah, they already.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, well, you heard at our last meeting and when the.
I don't think you're getting the mic.
I'm sorry. Am I not getting?
There you are.
I usually speak loud enough to get the mic, but I'm sorry about that. At the last meeting when the Turning Point folks were here to talk a little bit about their views and their struggles with the opiate and opioid problems that are, that are, exist not only in Bennington but throughout the United States and probably the world. Several young women who are again here tonight spoke about the need for greater effort on the part of Vermont communities to perhaps arrange through this potential lawsuit to, to bring funds into the community that can help with the fight against the opioid problem. Fed Up Vermont is the group that has brought this to our attention. They have put us in touch with the attorney in Vermont, the Vermont attorney that represents the firm Sanford Heisler and Sharp in Washington DC and throughout the nation actually. And they are asking us if we would like to join this lawsuit. I laid out not only the firm summary, but I had some questions about how it works. You've been provided with that information. There is no cost to the community to be a part of this lawsuit. It is technically I suppose not a class action lawsuit, but it is a lawsuit brought on behalf of the communities that determined that they would like to participate. And so, I'm here tonight to see if in fact you would like to do that.
Stu, just a couple of questions. This firm is, would they be filing it in the state court?
That is their intent. They want to file it in the Vermont District Court.
And to date, are we aware of other towns and cities that have joined in the?
Not in Vermont. I'm not aware of any in Vermont at the present time.
Okay. Other than the, their curriculum vitae, the CV, has Town Council had a chance to just look at that firm to give you some opinion of?
I haven't asked that question. I haven't, I haven't reached out to Rob's firm to, to get an opinion on this situation. I'd be, I'd certainly be glad to do that if, if that would, would help perhaps your understanding of how this will work and whether or not it's something we ought to be involved and I'd be glad to do that.
The, I'd like to hear from each and every board member relative to this, but it seems to me that it's, you know, hearing that testimony of a couple of weeks ago from Joe, Jerry, Wendy, Wendy, you know, that was so heartfelt. And then I think of all the years that the large pharmaceutical companies have been gaining, benefiting financially at the, basically the, the cost of our health, for our community. I think it's time that we start to get in a mode that we get these companies to whatever extent that we can to take some responsibility for dealing with the aftermath of this scourge. And I would encourage us to seriously consider joining in this, this action or an action similar to it. Because if we just sit and wait for it to happen in Congress or otherwise, I don't think that by itself is going to be the answer. It's the citizens that we hear from and we are, you know, that citizenry that should take up the banner.
And the, and the second part of that is though, if there is a benefit to be gained, that benefit is realized locally.
Yep.
Not regionally, not statewide, not nationally and then shared with municipalities. We would benefit directly should there be a benefit that comes from this.
Yep, and we're not naive enough to know that it's going to be an overnight response as much as we would like to because the need is there, it continues daily. You know, we talked about the, the facilities, we need the facilities, we need that brick and mortar and maybe, and I don't think we can afford to wait, but at the same time, let's get these companies to have to come to Vermont to talk with the Vermonters about how they're impacting us.
It'd be good.
So, that's my pitch, my speech from the pulpit. Chad, do you have a?
I don't have a question.
Do you, do you think this is appropriate?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I'm in complete agreement.
Thanks.
My only question would be, I mean, are there, should we be looking at, are there potential downsides? I mean, this sounds like something we should do, but I also don't have background in this area, so I'm.
You and me both.
So, I mean, I don't know whether it makes sense to speak with, with Rob before.
I'd be glad to do that. I think that's probably a legitimate question, you know, get councils take on all of this. It seems pretty straightforward, but not having dealt with anything of this nature from my 45 years in government here, it can't hurt.
Is there a way for us to, I mean, make some decision tonight?
Subject to?
Subject to?
Yes, yeah. Not hearing, not hearing something that would prevent us from participating from Rob.
Appreciate you all being here again.
Yeah.
We thank you for taking us.
Yeah, no, your words last meeting stuck with us. There's a.
Yeah, I think I just want.
Rose, we see your hand up back there, just let us go through the motions here.
I just don't want this thing to unfold, does mean.
Okay, I'm going to leave it to Stu to explain it to you offline, not tonight because we haven't got that much more time that we can spend on that. Jeannie, do you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that several, I've probably lost count of how many people watched our meeting and specifically listened to your stories and they were incredibly powerful. So, for me, I was so hoping that Tom would start at that end of the table when he asked for our comments. So, I'm going to say a little bit more tonight than I said the last time because I've had time to think about it. So, anyway, I'm, I just admire your courage and are so appreciative of your willingness to, to speak the way you did two weeks ago. And I also meant to thank Dr. Dundas for his willingness to own his part in creating this crisis. I imagine that was not easy for him to do. He's a man of incredible integrity and I just, I should have thanked him that night, but I couldn't gather my thoughts quickly enough. So, for me, this is just something else that we can do as a community to support the people that need our support in our community. So, I, unless there's a downside that we don't know of at this point, we, I feel strongly that we should participate in the lawsuit.
I'd accept, entertain a motion that we enter into a, an engagement with a, with this firm pending advice from counsel relative to the maintaining as parties plaintiff, the town of Bennington as a plaintiff in an action against appropriate pharmaceutical companies.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Other discussion or further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much again. We do have Tom Manager's report tonight.
Yes, the only action item I have for you tonight is the result of the town's acquisition through tax sale of a property out on 209 Pleasant Valley Road. It consisted of a home, several outbuildings and a number of, we'll call them cabins. It was part of a motel establishment long ago closed. We did a bid, we were hoping to receive a minimum of approximately $79,000 which is the delinquency plus the additional taxes for the year that the redemption period ran plus interest at 1% per month. We received only one bid of $12,500 from James Hurst who is a resident of Pleasant Valley Road and his explanation is included in the packet. Basically, we, he's going to remove the 13 outbuildings. Attempt to renovate the home which has been abandoned. We found that there was more than a foot of water in the basement. All of the heating systems are underwater essentially. He's estimating demolition cost of 35,000 to 40,000. Those will increase dramatically if this is found in those properties. He believes the septic system may need to be renovated and obviously the home needs a ton of work. Staff has looked at this, we are recommending that you accept this bid. One, it will put the building back into productive use much faster than we could possibly hope to accomplish and it essentially stops the decay of this particular property which has become an eyesore for the people of Pleasant Valley Road and for those who are out in that area of town.
I'll entertain a motion for the authorization. Either, somebody make a motion, at least the author.
So moved.
Yep. And second, because we're selling town property now, sorry.
Second.
Second, great. Discussion, and I think there might be a couple of questions. Go ahead.
How many acres is it?
Oh, dear. I'm not entirely sure. I don't have the property card with me.
I think it's in...
Is it in the narrative?
I don't believe it is, but no, let me see. I don't believe it is.
It's not?
Yeah. It's a good-sized lot, that I can tell you.
Yeah, you've been there enough. Is there a plan, does he have a planned timeline?
He hopes to, and I'll look to Dan if I misstate this, he hopes to substantially secure the property over the winter, get some power back in so that the sump pump will actually do its job. I believe that he has already talked with folks who would be willing to demolish the properties that are there. Whether or not we're too late into the season for that kind of work as well, I think is really going to be up to Mr. Hurst as to whether or not that can get done. So I think realistically, we're looking probably more as a spring, a real effort in the spring to begin the renovation and demolition process.
Was there any other interest expressed?
We had one other couple who talked with me. They were going to take a look at the property, and I believe they did so, but they did not submit a bid.
And for clarity, this never went to open market, it just kind of went out in the banner...
Public notice.
Public notice.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, this is the second property in the second meeting that has fallen to such disrepair that is basically going for song. And is there, are there things that we could be doing differently that maybe we could get these properties out earlier so that they're bringing in a better return?
I'd like to think so. The unfortunate part is, is we always give the property owners the greatest chance to come into an agreement with us to pay. In both of these cases, there were agreements that were signed over the years where they were not. And ultimately, because they're falling further and further behind, when we finally take an action, we were looking at a $50,000 debt. After a year of redemption, it's now a $79,000 debt. And once you go to sale, the redemption requires payment of the full price. There's no more of an opportunity to come into an agreement. And we offer people, I mean, we bill these folks monthly, and we tell the delinquent folks that we'll enter into an agreement, you just need to contact us to put you on a payment plan. In both these cases, the houses did suffer dramatically. They were abandoned. They were left essentially untouched. Unfortunately, on the Washington Avenue property, we had squatters move in and take possession of the property before we actually took ownership of it. So in that redemption period, we had people move into the property. And so these are the kinds of things that you just, you never know.
But I think it's important that, you know, these are just two properties. There are a number of properties that go through the process of getting agreements, and they come up with their abilities to get the...
And we generally, we're generally pretty successful with those particular agreements. And, you know, just within the last couple of weeks, our notices went out to those people who have not managed to keep up with their agreements and who are more than two years delinquent, saying that you are now on the potential tax sale list, we need to hear from you. And in fact, today I met with an individual who was doing his best to get back into compliance with an agreement that he had and then had allowed to lapse due to some financial problems that he incurred. So it's a difficult situation. A property like this, you assume is being maintained by the owner, but we should have known better, probably, in this particular case. And I mean, I think it's incumbent on us when we sell a property at tax sale, or we take a property at tax sale, that we stay, I think, more attuned to that one-year redemption period. That's something that we have not done, and we're learning. We don't generally take properties at sale just because of these kinds of problems that develop.
And for clarity, based on the fact we're in decision still, we can pause on making a decision tonight?
You could, yes.
Would you like to table it?
Yes, please.
Just table it.
Yeah. I mean, I think, based on the last house that we sold in a previous meeting, it appeared to me, mind you, maybe I'm just the recipient of some comments on this, based on the fact we made the decision to sell that other home, it was, I don't know if it was covered in the banner as well, but many individuals approached me and said, wow, I wish I had known that. And maybe, again, it was appropriately put in the banner, and everyone had that given opportunity, but bringing it to light in a meeting like this, maybe a few more people became aware of it, if we had other opportunities to put that in a real estate listing, just other means to maybe gain more interest.
Maybe another part of it is just by having this discussion tonight, maybe we should have a practice when the manager makes a recommendation that we have this informational meeting and then not move on until the following meeting, to give folks, if they have an interest in coming forward, because that's, you know, that's how they found out, apparently.
And I couldn't think of a better owner of this property. I mean, it has no relation to my decision tonight.
I understand.
I would love to see these individuals get that, but it's not the exercise at hand here. So that's why I would just like to take a pause and...
Table it, tell...
I just think we need to act quickly, because there are in that basement. It's getting colder. We can't really turn on the electric stove or fire, so I think two weeks is a long time to wait for that building, because I know that the fire wants to get in there and start working on it right away. I understand it's a very low price for that property, but...
I mean, what could be a lower offer? It's $12,000. They can offer six instead? I mean, it's, there's not much of a difference here, just as long as we get the chance to kind of hear maybe from some other people. I personally, I apologize if everyone else has. I haven't been out there to put eyes on it myself, and I have a responsibility for that if everyone else has. Just kind of going through the exercise so I can be a little more informed, and that's my only ask. I mean, if we can vote on it, if everyone else wants to sell it, then so be it. I mean, I'm just, I would rather not vote and then just go through, take a little more time, that's all.
I think it's a little bit of a concern, not knowing how big the property is.
Yeah, I'm really struggling with...
I drive by it, so I, I mean, I know it's not in good repair, but it hasn't been. It just feels like a really low price.
For the land?
Yes, for the land.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to table? That's I need.
Yeah, motion to table.
Second. I don't think we even have to vote on it, it's just tabled.
And thank you to them for their interest in it. I mean, again, it has no reflection on the people interested.
Okay. Other business, Stu?
No, I don't think so. We handed out tonight, you received a packet of agency requests, and I believe they all have the information we asked. They are in your packet initially, are those that we normally place within the budget. And then the second part of that packet is those that would normally go on the ballot. There are two agencies that did not submit a request. I understand they may be petitioning, but I don't know that. I know there is a petition by Turning Point out in the community for some additional funds. I heard about that today. The other is the Free Clinic. They may be petitioning for additional monies. So those are the two that were not in the packet. The second packet you received is the Bennington Downtown Alliances budget. I want to make sure I get those right. That will be considered at budget time. All of these agency requests will be considered at budget time. We brought them in earlier because we wanted to not hold that packet and offer you an opportunity to review it. We wanted to get the information out to you so you have plenty of time to read it and understand. I think that the requests total just under $1 million in this packet.
So, I thought petitions were due at the same time.
No, petitions are not due until 40 days before the vote. Forty-seven days before the vote.
Remember the rescue squad? We went through that process.
I could one forget.
Yeah, the rescue squad is in this packet.
Yeah. The... So the essence of it is that we're going to be looking at these agency requests and also the BDA. And they're all not, they're all tax exempt, federal exemptions?
I'm going to say yes. They're all 501...
Something Cs or Twos or...
Yeah, yeah. These are all the nonprofits.
And that's including the BDA?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make, confirm that for...
And it may be that a few folks, you know, as we move into the month of December, if you think there is a Saturday you want to spend some time talking with some of these agencies, rather than waiting until the whole budget process, which can get quite lengthy and it's relatively rushed through the month of January, we could try to set some things up.
I think that's a great idea.
Because you now have the information, so now...
We're in the spirit of giving, too, so...
Especially the bigger ones, the ones that...
Yeah. Takes some time.
He left, but, ones like the rescue, ones that are, even have a lot of that money dollars.
Yep, let's look at that.
So we'll take a look.
Yep, that's a great idea. Before I have other comments, I just want to thank Zirwan and the team relative to those two Town Bennington grant awards, you know, for the Hail Resources, for the grant for the Vermont Community Development Program. Congratulations. That was a biggie. 200, $650,000, right? And also the other grant, which name I forget, which, what's the other grant?
The Harvard Health and Research 1250 Grant?
Right, yes. Yeah, I don't know. Congratulations, those are really healthy grants. And they came to, they came like almost the same day or something, or just, yeah. That's really great. Thank you very much for everything. That's a good, great effort and great result. Other business before we adjourn, there's not going to be an executive session, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm hoping we can...
There's not going to be.
What?
No executive session.
Oh, yay!
Yeah. You guys like, yeah, yeah.
I didn't think that could possibly be true, so it just went right over my head.
Yeah, that, okay, Jacob.
Let me just hang on to that for a moment. No executive session. I hope we can put on the agenda, and maybe, maybe not for a few months, because we have, you know, some really heavy meetings coming up, but I have several friends who are very interested in getting like an inventory and an update and information on the woodlots, like the Y Woods and all the other parcels that the town owns. And it would be great if David Dents was here. He teaches the forestry program at the CDC. People just really want to understand what's going on with the woods and what the plans are for the future, what's being logged, what's not being logged, how the woods are being used. So if we could just keep that in the back of our minds, I'm thinking maybe, I don't know, February, when things sort of calm down, that would be great.
Good.
Nothing other than BRC meetings, which I'm thinking, I mean, there, BRC is having a meeting Tuesday night and Thursday night, right? One in Sunderland and one...
Sunderland's tomorrow.
And one in Arlington to just go over their structure and how they're funded and what they offer. And even though it's really for municipalities, it feels like it's actually really useful for everyone that's interested, yes? If they want, so, can they go to the, I'm looking at you, Dan, can they go to the BRC website to get that information? They're at 6:30, but one's...
The dates, this should be on the BRC website.
They're on the BRC website. But, yeah, it feels like a great opportunity for everyone to understand what this great regional commission does for us.
Just wanted, Stuart, if you could convey my thank you to RJ and his crew with the snow flying and having our first snow day. The roads are always, they do a great job, and it's a thankless job. Everyone complains, and I just want to let them know, they do a great job already, and it's just starting, and it's going to be long-winded.
They all watch this program, Chad, so you've done a great job.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Chad. No other business to come before the meeting, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I guess you got a second.
I got a second.
Okay, all in favor, yes, aye, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Nancy.